Great.
Good.
Good. I think all the members are here except for.
Bill just arrived.
Oh, and Bill's just there. He's coming in. Good. And I want to welcome Councilman Snow. Hello, Councilman Snow. So.
Glad to be here.
Great. So I don't, does anyone want to privilege it before? Anyone online?
I don't, I have someone to bring up, but I don't know whether I should bring it up. I'll prove it to the floor or later.
You can bring it up later when we're doing stuff. Yeah. Um. So since we don't have that, we will move along. The minutes from the last meeting have been sent out. Does anyone want to move those? Somebody wave at me online. I see Michelle waving at me. Thank you. Who would like to second them?
I'll second. It's Barb.
Barb? Any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So our work this evening is several things. One is to go through the final copy that has been given to us and we have some notes on. Mark is having, he's struggling with his computer.
What is that stuff up there?
I don't know. It's stuff. And, um, and make any changes that need to be made before we approve the first, the second draft. Articles one through four. The other things that we want to do is think about when we will have public meetings. And I think that's it. Okay. So Bruce, you said you had something you wanted to bring up. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah. Yeah, I was just, you know, I appreciate the work everybody's doing. But when this thing that was sent to the ad committee, and then I got it last night at like eight o'clock, I would have liked to have a chance to look at some of these articles and read some of it before.
I'm sorry. That's my fault. I should have done that.
You know, just because this is a committee, I'd like to.
Right.
If I had some in order, if I did or didn't, I don't know. But I'll look at some of it now.
Well, we had sent out what they had sent and then Barbara sent back a lot of stuff, which I think went out to everyone. And then I, yes, everyone had gotten that. And then I wrote it into a memo and sent it out, but you had gotten what Barbara had sent. That was a couple of weeks ago. Okay, um.
I guess I didn't read it all, but had I known we were gonna send something to the ad committee, I would have, you know, read some of these that are been listed here and gone over them at least. Possibly had some comments, but that's okay.
Okay. Um. So, um, Nan, I think what we, Bill, I see his hand up. Hello, Bill.
Yeah. So just a quick comment, Jean, and then this is, you have to sort of decide, you know, along the lines of what Bruce was just saying. You know, I think there are definitely times when it's appropriate for the chair to provide, say, you know, this case, information to the ad committee, or as you did, provide documents to the review board. You know, yes, there are times when it's the zoning commission speaking, in which case, yeah, we should all have a chance to see the memo you're writing and then give a little feedback on it. Obviously, all of this was based information that had been out to committee members two, three, four weeks ago. So I, I would have been, you know, from my perspective, it was you summarizing what we had already come across the lines and that was fine, but as a matter of principle, yes, we should decide when it's okay for the chair to act alone versus when it actually is the committee, in which case there should be a committee discussion.
I agree. And I should have done that and I just didn't. Um.
Comments could still be submitted.
Absolutely. Yeah. Um. I did ask who's on the ad committee because I was going to just send it out to everybody on the ad committee, but the only people on the ad committee online on the website are Mr. Dagert.
Don.
And Don. And I think there must be more.
There are more. I.
Okay. I'm sure Catherine.
I can check with Catherine.
I have told her that and something.
He already said he was.
Pete Boy. Pete Boy. Yeah. I, yeah.
And I'll just chip in. I think that, you know, they're being loose. It's not a committee with a strictly defined membership as say the planning board, the review board is, that they are functioning more like the Energy Independent Caroline, which advises on matters of energy stuff that they're, I think, letting folks participate as they have time and willingness. That's my understanding. But Catherine can fill us in on their details.
Okay. Thank you. Tim, do you have any report from the town council?
Just that the next town board meeting will be next Wednesday, which believe it or not, is June 1st. At seven o'clock. And I just want to let you know that, that Mark and I have discussed this and we're ready really to move as soon as possible to assist you in distributing any information to the public that you might want in advance of the, of any public information sessions, but just realizing that this takes time to get out. So we're ready, but if, if we, if we want something before the end of June, now's the time.
Okay. In fact, I wanted to tell people that I've heard back from everyone on the committee, on the commission, about availability and the best possible dates seem to be Wednesday, June 29th and Thursday, June 30th. Um. Tuesday, June 29th, practically everybody can be there except one person. All the other dates, there are like two or three people who can't be there. So I think those seem like very good dates. So please put those on your calendar and later this evening we'll try to discuss what we do, when and where. And that also then gives us some time that's a month and a bit to get something out. And I've started to write some potential postcardy things. Um, but I, they're not finished yet. I'm, I'm in the midst of other things.
Do you mind repeating those dates, please?
You went Wednesday, Wednesday is June 29th, Tuesday is June 28th. So what are you talking about?
I'm talking about there are three possible dates.
Okay.
June 28th, everyone except Michelle said that she could be there, that they could be there. Wednesday, June 29th, everyone said that's a good day. Thursday, June 30th. Um. Everyone except Barbara said she can be there. So those, those seem to be the three possible, the best of all the possible dates. And they're far enough away that we can get things out in a timely manner, I think. So we can talk about those. Okay. So Nan, if you could put up the final version um, and share your screen. I think we will go through that. And I know there are a couple of places that we have some specific things that we want to do and I want to get to those in the next hour because I know Bill has to leave and Bill had written up a few things. But other than that, I think we'll just sort of start at the very beginning and winder way forward. Does that seem good to people?
Yes.
Okay, good. So.
The only question I have is there are various comments in the Google Doc. And I think this is not that. Am I correct?
Yeah, yes, I have, yep, I have not looked at the Google Doc yet.
Okay, I, what I'm gonna do then is I'm gonna call up the Google Doc on my own screen.
Great, thank you, Jean.
I can see where we are. I'll do that.
So yeah, so I think Nan's probably fine for you to share the word version and Jean can, can chip in with comments. Is everything you'll do?
Oh, okay. Okay, let me share that back up again. Okay. Um, hold on one second here.
Michelle has a question.
Oh, Michelle, go ahead, please.
Um, well, I know I put a couple of comments on the Google Doc, but I didn't actually see where other people, well, you know, there were some grammatical things. I feel like it's possible I might be the only person that has questions about a couple of places, but.
Um, I think that that's not the case. I think there are, um, there are others, but I'll, I'll look when we get there because I put things in for sure.
And I, and I know that Bill and I did as well on the Google Doc.
Okay.
So. I mean, does it make sense to, I suppose I could probably put the Google Doc up on here. Does it make more sense to have that with all the comments in it?
Maybe, maybe that would make sense. Okay.
Let me see if I could get to that easy enough. Um. I just have to find it here. Um. Hmm, now, so it's, it's not the same link as the other Google Doc was.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna share mine.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Okay, so if my host lets me, I will share it. My host.
You should get it now.
Okay, I just have to get to the right thing. Some days are harder than others. Have you ever noticed that? You probably have.
Yep.
It's just usually not Tuesday.
Okay. Then. Okay, so I go back to Zoom. Here it is. Okay. So. Everyone got it?
Yep.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna move this thing somewhere else. And just go down this. I think the, I, here's the, we're just going.
All right, there's a very first thing that Barb, you know, and I had this thing going back and forth about what to say on the cover page of this darn thing. Because we renumbered a bunch of the articles. And so if people were referring to the old draft, they're gonna think we've done, looked at article four in the old draft, which we have not done. So I don't know how to make that clear, but there was some comments on the cover page that Barb had put in. Or somewhere up there.
I, I thought that I would try to make that clear by, when I write the first postcard and send it to all of you to review, that it will very clearly say that. That these are the ones we're doing.
It just needs to say on the document too, because there are people who look at the document and not remember the postcard or, you know, didn't look at the postcard and.
How many we can put what the articles are. They'll be all named.
Or just, or just add a note that says, um, you know, that there's been a renumbering.
Yeah, I, I think that's good.
Okay, so we can put in a thing, I'm gonna write on here. Put in renumbering of articles. How's that? And then we will do.
And I, well, I, I think it's just important to, to recognize, to acknowledge in this document that there's a December 2021 draft that's posted on the, on the town website. And to emphasize that, that the pertinent articles, you know, four through 14, except for 10, which was the terminology section, have not been reviewed by the zoning commission. I mean, just to be very clear about that because, you know, people are gonna see the.
So.
From a 130-page document now to a 55-page document, what happened? So just to be clear.
Okay. I agree. That makes sense. And so we'll keep this as well.
So the plans will, will post just the new articles as a doc and leave the old draft up.
Yes.
Complete.
Yes.
I think that makes sense if people want to compare. Okay, then we have all of the contents, which seemed fine to me. Anyone else? This 51 is hanging out there and needs to be removed.
Yeah, that, that's, that's on the Google Doc version. It's not on the, the main version. The, the Google Doc version changes all of the spacing and stuff, so things are off.
Yeah, that was, and you can see my comment that there was some weirdness in the short version of the Word file there because there was part of the figure on lot splitting somehow in the Word doc there and I don't.
Yeah, I know that it's not a, it's not an easy transition from Word to Google, so we'll.
No, no, I understand that the problems in the Word file, the, the short form of the Word file has part of the figure in the wrong place. So you'll, you'll see that when you go through.
Yep.
Okay, we're on to purposes. The enacting clause, the scope and title, the purposes. We had passed all of this a while ago. Um. Yeah, and Michelle comments that this where it's sort of out of, it's just out of alignment on our things.
Yeah.
As we go.
Again, that's.
And that's, that's it.
Yeah, it's a format issue that in the, in the Word file, it's not like that.
Right. Um, Michelle has a comment about this. This is C for both the town, number three. Support home occupations that are in keeping with the rural character of the town. So Michelle, you wanted to discuss?
Well, it's just, uh, we're, we've said that all home occupations are acceptable, so this implies that there are some home occupations that we wouldn't allow, I think.
Should, would you like to suggest that we get rid of the clauses?
I guess you could just, I would say just support home occupations, but I would not add that are in keeping with the rural character of the town.
How do people feel about that?
Fine with me.
I guess I would say that, you know, there are certain home occupations that might not be acceptable. You know, fireworks, fireworks testing facility, you know, I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, but we haven't, we have not, we have not said that, I think we've said all home occupations are acceptable.
You're letting the tail wag the dog. I mean, I think that, that, you know, these, these first clauses are what everything is supposed to spring from. And so, you know, really, if, if that's, you know, you're, you're, you're reversing the order of how things should go. If, if this was an important clause to us in the preface, then our zoning should follow it. And I think that it does because we haven't outlawed anything specifically, but in the event that somebody did want to outlaw something specifically, this would give you more ammunition to do that in the future.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to rewrite the preface based on the document that follows it. The preface should stand.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying and I, I'm not too, although I do make another comment similar to this when this appears later. I guess I just wonder if somebody might read that and say, and send out an anonymous mailing that says, hey, they're not gonna allow, they're only gonna allow certain home occupations. But, uh, you know, I would.
We did, we did.
To everybody else on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, of keeping it in for exactly the reasons that Ernie outlined. I mean, it's true, we don't in our use table, but someday it might if something, you know, if, if the need arises, so. I would think it's fine to keep it in. And similarly, in the comment you made in the, wherever it was, I think I also suggested leaving it in there too.
Okay.
Okay, so any, anything else for leaving it in? That's, is that okay? Hearing nothing, I'm gonna move ahead. Okay, promote accessibility, then we're going on to separability. These, this is all what we had approved several months ago, actually. And then a description of what the reader's aid boxes are. And words. What words are definitions. And we go through the definitions and Bill says that we need to make a pass through, yes, to figure out what we're using N's or M's and and just make it, you know, look right.
Yeah. And Nan, with that, you know, again, would you rather one of us did that kind of final nitpicky proofreading or, you know, what?
Um. I'd certainly, either way, as long as we just keep it straight, which one is the master copy, so we don't have multiple original copies floating around, so we all know which version we're working off of. Um. It's, uh, you know, I, I I don't mind going back and I probably would get rid of, because Word always has a problem, whether it's a dash or an N or whatever, and I think maybe a more straightforward way, so there's no mistakes, just to replace that with a colon.
Okay.
But whatever, you know, you let me know. If you want me to do it, is I making the edits? It won't take very long, or if you would like to do it and send it back to me, you know, I think it's the same amount of time, one way or the other.
Yeah, I personally have no interest in doing it. On the other hand, it's a question of, of using your time and resources most wisely, so, uh, whatever, it's fine with me, but I, I don't personally want to do it. I'm kind of busy, so.
I'm gonna leave it to Nan, I think.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to just see if I have any other comments. I'm only gonna stop where I'm seeing comments unless somebody wants to call something out. Because we just did these in the last few weeks. Average lot size. So Michelle says, this sounds like you would not round up. So let us read this. You can all read it yourselves and tell us.
Oh, because it says larger than the minimum density specified for that district.
Right, and, and the answer is, you know, someone could take a 30-acre parcel divided in two, giving them an average of 15, and that's larger than the minimum density, so it's okay. You know, and so I think that's why that it says must be larger than the minimum, is that it covers everything except you cannot go below that. It doesn't mention rounding at all. And I think that that's also fine, as my comment there says, that the place to talk about rounding is in the actual text.
Yeah, I, I would agree that the rounding is more of a clarification that in the text is fine. I'd say it doesn't need to be in the average lot size definition.
Okay. And I'm going to mark these as resolved.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and we will go along until we see a issue. There are those are basic things like non-building is, they probably want you to hyphenate it. This is like character Hamlet. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, so now there's various comments from various folks about, you know, just to help guide you in the Word document, there's something, the little, little tweaks.
Right, that's all these are basically.
Uh, that's a question though, um, back up to what I, I didn't know about alphabetizing. So because it was community character, it came after common plan. We've now swapped everything a lot around, so we have character, comma, something. So where do people want these? Here under CO or back up under CH?
I think they have to go up under charac, uh, under character, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I, I missed that one. Yeah, you're right. It is out of place.
Okay, so that will get moved. We'll just leave that as it is. Um, that's a, that's typo-y thing.
Yep.
I'm. Um, those are all fine. Um. Existing lots of record change lots to lot.
Yep.
Oh, I have to go in and change it then because otherwise it's, I marked it resolved.
Yeah, but again, but again, you're, you're changing the Google Doc version and Nan has to change the Word version.
Yeah, I'm gonna mark and highlight it, so it's.
Okay, yeah, you just need to do something to help remind Nan that we made some change or did something.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm making some of these as we go.
Okay.
On my version.
Great. Okay. I'm seeing health, medical clinic laboratory. And I think, I said that I think those in the second line should be that. Providing healthcare services.
Or that provides.
Or that provides support to the medical professionals. Or that provides, yes, okay, or that provides. So yes, so we'll leave that and Nan can correct that. Uh. Um. In, under industrial use heavy in the sixth line, heavy industrial uses. Is this, should be all, all include? Or?
Uh, I think just take the AL out. I don't know what that is. It shouldn't be just heavy industrial uses include.
Okay.
I think it should be shell.
You think it should be shell?
Shell include? Okay, you're right.
I'm going to stick shell in there and so is Nan.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, cool. Termites. I know. Um. Large disturbance activity, that's just capitalizing, A, capitalizing the letter at the beginning of all the things. Um. On to perennial stream again, capitalizing. Performance guarantee. I don't think there's anything else. Photometric plan, A. Okay, we're on to name plate capacity under solar energy facility. So Bill says in the solar law, name plate capacity is a defined term. Either copy that definition into these definitions or ditch the capital letters here. Which do we want to do? I have no idea what name plate capacity was. I figured it was how big a name plate was and how many letters you could get on it. But that's.
It's one of, it's, you know, it's one of those buzzwords that, um, I don't even, you know, I think we could even be fine with just saying with a capacity of. But you know, a name plate, a name plate capacity is the, you know, basically the, um, the manufacturers, whatever they call it, the manufacturers. Not warranty, the manufacturers, you know.
Headlines. So, so, yeah, I mean, basically it's, it's an industry standard term and that's because, you know, for a solar panel in particular, it, you know, how much it puts out depends on, it's the sun hitting it directly and what temperature is it? Because at higher temperatures, they do less. And so name plate capacity is like, okay, at 70 degrees with direct insulation, at such intensity, here's what you get out. So it's, you know, industry has defined it. We don't need to do that here. I say, take the capital letters out. You know, in the solar law, it was, it was important to be extremely careful. But basically, name plate capacity is a known, you look it up.
Okay, so I think that's a great idea.
Like, oh, we're doing it differently.
Okay, so Nan, you can just make those small letters.
Lowercase.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Uh. I think we are wetland delineation. Bill suggests that we change this to Tompkins County Wetland Maps and other maps such as the 1990 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service map, which assist in the. Does that sound good?
Say that again?
Uh, under wetland delineation in the fourth line from the bottom, uh, after a semicolon, it says, and other maps such as the 1990 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service map, which assist in the location and delineation of wetlands and Tompkins County Wetland maps. And Bill basically just suggests flipping those to be, I suggest changing this to Tompkins County Wetland Maps, semicolon, and other maps such as the 1990 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service map, which um.
It just got a little confusing what the other maps. I just thought, okay, if we're, once we're talking about other maps, let's have all our other maps listed before we say other maps. So that's why I flipped it. It's not a huge deal, but it was just a suggestion.
I think that's fine. Makes sense to me. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, that sounds good. Um. That's the end of the definitions. Praise God. Okay. Um, so that means we are now on to article three. And article three, it starts with a reader's aid and then it has the, and basically all I was suggesting here is that under Hamlet, large commercial is indented and needs to be unindented.
Yep.
And and then in B, it says the following overlay districts are established. Well, we really only have one, so it's, um, the following overlay district is established. And that's water resources and flooding. And then we're on to purpose statements and um. Let's see, this is, I think where Michelle made another thing about.
Yeah, so you can, you you can, you know, I wasn't really. It 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 bothered me a little bit, but it doesn't, it's not a big deal, so I would just ignore, again, ignore my comment here.
Okay, so we're just gonna leave this as it is.
Yes.
Okay, Nan, that's good with you? You know what we're talking about? Yep.
Yep.
Then under Hamlet, um, we have in the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, like eighth line down. It has to ensure new new development incorporates building scale, massing layout and design. Consistent, it's just basically taking out a few words and um. Moving a few things around, because when you started out with building scale, you had to start with an A. Is that good?
No, I I am very happy with Barb's wordsmithing there.
Yep, me too. Okay. Um. Then on the top of the next page. Um, under C, Bill suggests changing that to small businesses that are scaled and designed in the next to last line. And perhaps having separate descriptions for Caroline Center and Speedsville. But no one.
What do you, what do you all think about that? I mean, you know, again, they are different and uh, we've indeed now separated them out in the use table, dimensions table, and our list of Hamlets. But they get lumped together here, so it just seemed to me reasonable to have a separate description of each. Of either.
Yeah, and 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 that's fine, I I I think that's why I added the first part where it says although having different characteristics and uses. I mean, if you can come up with different purposes. For those. You know, how are the purposes differ? How or how do the the, you know, yes, they have different standards, but how do they differ from a purpose? So. Happy to separate them, if you could offer me some language that separates the the purposes of them out.
Okay, I think that's a, that's a great point, and I, it's not something that I feel moved to take on, so if if people are happy with this as is, then we'll just leave it as is.
As long, as long as the final sentence includes Speedsville.
Yes, because right now it just says Caroline.
Oh, yes, okay.
Speedsville. Okay. Fabulous. Brooktondale, in Brooktondale, I think there are just some deleting some of some commas. In center Brooktondale, there's deleting a few more commas. Um. The overlay district has an A, we don't really need the A because it's.
It's no longer a B.
Right.
Okay, then we have section three point two. The interpretation of district boundaries, which we have just gone over recently. And then we have zoning map. And I think we'll come back and look at the zoning map at the end. Um. And then we go on to uses and dimensions. So. Um. The only thing, but I I do find it, um, myself difficult when I'm reading this, if we don't have those headings across the top of every one of these pages.
Yeah, that that's another Google Doc artifact, though, because if you look at the Word version, every page has a header.
Okay, and it also switches from portrait to landscape view, so the table fits better. So that doesn't show up in the Google Doc.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you, because, um. I was.
I I did, yeah, and then I don't know what you, I did comment, though, that, you know, a cave, there's a cut, one or two spots where you know, there is a description under one of the districts that gets split into two pages, and if there's just, you know, again, one, I don't know, sometimes you have to be very clever about making it break or not making it break.
Yeah, okay.
Do that, that's great, it's sometimes, word can be a pain with tables, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any comments as we go through here. I actually did look at my original documents and at these and found no discrepancies, which I thought was quite remarkable. Good work, Nan. Um. So I'm down to bakery and I'm moving this thing through. We still see no discrepancies, no. We're on to.
Okay, so, yeah, you scroll up a little bit.
Yeah, am I here? Thing.
All right, so this is, this is one of the amendments that I offered was to, I just reworded both of these.
Right. So this, I think we all got from Bill an email. Bill's suggestion about a new wording for agricultural rural zoning district. And. Does anyone, I thought it was great, anyone else have any questions?
I mean, yeah, I don't know, anyone else move that we substitute that for this, and then if people want to talk about it, great, um, I'm not saying it has to be exactly like that, but.
Okay, so Bill, you are, you are moving this, and I, would someone like to second moving this? Ernie will second. Great. And.
And I mean, everyone on the zoning commission has that text, um, if anyone wants me to pop it on the screen, I can do that.
That'd be great, why don't you pop it up?
All right, so give me a second uh, to set that up.
Beside the quadrofores, I think.
All right, so. I think, I have to make sure I get the right one, of course, because.
Yeah, that's the right one, I think.
Uh, reader's aid box on. Yeah, this must. All right, I'm gonna hope I've got, oh, no, here we go. No, all right, this will be it. Yes, this is it, all right, so I'm gonna share my screen then, let's see if I can find Zoom again. All right. So, yeah, so 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 Jean, you got the unshare temporarily.
Well, stop sharing. Great.
And then I will share. All right, so there it is. Um, so for what it's worth, if there's anybody there in the audience at the place, I don't know if they can read that, but anyway, so that's. So I don't know if anyone, any, any suggestions on the language, and they wanted to change, or do we just want to vote on this, but is it one of up? I mean, the main change, I made them more parallel in structure. Um, and, you know, change the motivation slightly on the ag rural zoning districts.
Okay, um, we have a motion, we have a second. Anyone want to speak for or against?
The only thing I would say is I don't find the sentence about the town of Caroline has determined that it can best meet the community goals establishing blah, 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 as necessary.
So that would be the second, the whole second sentence.
It's just kind of. You know, it's, it's one of those lines that kind of, um, we're, we're proselytizing for zoning. Where I don't think we're really. You know, I I don't think it adds any clarity to the the box, that's, that's my only comment.
So would you like to offer a?
No, I just, I'm gonna throw it out there, and if anybody agrees, then we can discuss it if nobody wants to.
I can do, I agree.
Okay, um. We have an agreement, so let's offer that as a friendly amendment that uh, to get rid of the second sentence. Is anyone, Bill, would you accept this as a friendly method?
Yeah, I, I expect so, let me just think for a second, again, and and that was, you know, um, a sentence that came along for the ride from previous stuff, so, you know. It seemed at ti- at the time reasonable to me, and just looking at the Hamlet districts. Because, okay, so for under Hamlet districts, we say town of Caroline has determined minimum lot size isn't, is appropriate, now it's, we're trying to say, why is it density in the one and minimum lot size in the other, so part of um, the second sentence there that I've highlighted under this, you know, ag rural is the motivation for using a density limit, and that's. Yes, it's.
This is a reader's aid box as opposed to me. Yeah, so, uh, for that very reason, I've got no objection to leaving it as is. Um, yeah, because I think, you know, I mean, that was, when I read it, I said, yeah, you know, that's starting to kind of you know, push us away from being a regulation to be, you know, kind of a, you know, cheerleading for what we're doing here. Um, and, but I see now that, you know, it establishes a clarity to what which is important, so.
Yeah, I I agree, I think it should be left in.
I I agree it should be left in.
Okay, so we're with the drawing here amendment and.
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay, great. Are we leaving it in? We're leaving it in, all in favor of changing, then the original motion is we change the reader's aid box to this, including that sentence. Say aye.
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 Fabulous, that is adopted, thank you, Bill.
Okay, I'm gonna stop share, so you can start again.
Okay, and I will share, because that's just how I am.
We are, we are indeed in kindergarten, right?
Got another allergy.
Okay, so that's, that box now is gone, and we are moving along to the schedule, table and schedules. And. I see nothing in here. Four, three, now four, three is where.
Oh, that, that, that's my mistake, it's four, four, so I I messed you all up earlier, sorry about that, Nan, Nan caught that, so.
Okay, so then we go on to four, four.
But there is something in in four, three, part C, which is, it doesn't talk about rounding when we do the density we intended to, so I think it just should mention that.
Okay, I would say after three acres and rounding to the nearest whole number, is that what we want to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Nan, you got that? Great.
I do.
Wonderful, so then we go on, I'm gonna try to move this box again, so then I can actually look at my document. Move that up there and. Um. We're down to, we have a reader's aid box again. So this is example two, that should say the Beesmer Hamlet.
Or really, or really any Hamlet, but, you know, Beesers.
Some Hamlet, yeah.
But I use Beesmer.
Okay, and. And then we can get rid of the when no public water or sewer is provided, because we have eliminated that. Distinction. In that box. Okay, then we're on to monitoring lot splits, and this is the thing that Bill has rewritten with. So Bill, I'm gonna turn this on to you.
Okay, so once again, if you stop sharing. Then I will share. I can.
Oh, are you sharing? I am sharing, but my hearing was hidden by pictures of people now.
Yeah.
And I don't have a bigger screen.
All right, okay, so I'm gonna close what I had. And open. Uh, okay, so I do. Okay, and now I gotta find you guys again. There we go. Okay, so, uh, this is the 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 clean version, so it doesn't show all the things that got changed, and I can put that up instead if people would prefer.
I think this is fine, just tell us about what.
And, right, so so I can, and I do, so I have you, so the main thing is that, I mean, like in the first one, this known as existing lot of record, I introduced that phrase here because we had it defined, and we then can use that later on. The other key thing that I do want to discuss is under A, where the official map. So the original version said that there would be, um, ownership data would be kept there. And it does seem to me that, um, that, you know, that ownership data is really available at the, by the county whenever it is needed. And I didn't see that the town had to keep updating its own map of that, but that was just, that's a question. So I just suggested that it have, you know, the lots of record, that we know the parcel numbers, and, you know, how subdivisions happen, that figure that we're all gonna take a look at later on. Under C. If I can figure out. Oh, there we go. So this is just laying out the basic procedure, and the other main change was I took out, um, some of the detail, thinking that what we wanted to just say was what had to happen and not necessarily dictate the exact wording of one, that had to be on the plat note. Um, that's a choice, you know, it may come a time when we, when it's felt that, yeah, we need a little bit more specificity specificity there. Um, but I'm hoping that, you know, if we just make it clear, the review board is gonna keep track of this stuff, they're gonna keep a record of it, and people can take, look at it, that that would be good enough. So, um, where I have C, there was a C and a one and a two that laid out exactly what happened if all the lots were used up, or if they weren't used up. And basically, that has changed us to say that, you know, that, that, you know, there's basically going to be, um, you know, that the owner of the current property specifies how any unused subdivision allocations, what properties they attach to. And that there will be an official record of it in the plat notes, and that will be signed by the chair of the review board, that was in the version just further down, and I stuck it in here. And then what I added, and this, I think, is very worthy of discussion, Nan had written some comments. Is, you know, it, to me, to some extent, you know, we're trying to limit density, when we are, not, we are trying to limit density, and to some extent, the choice of which parcel gets or doesn't get that, once you subdivide, exists in plot of record is, you know, arbitrary, that the owner decides, oh, two here, one there. And so if twenty years later an owner that got those two doesn't want them, but somebody else next to them does, and they're willing to exchange it for a fee of money or whatever, that would not violate the spirit of the zoning law. On the other hand, it might be a legally complicated thing to do, so what I thought of as a simple thing is maybe not so simple, so that's what we could discuss, but I thought we could add a clause saying that if parcel owners had a mutual agreement up to them, that they could trade those subdivision allocations back and forth as long as they stay within the same existing parcel of record. Um, but again, as Nan commented, that is actually a transfer to development rights, uh, and may get in some legal nuances that, uh, we may want to leave this clause out until we have a chance to investigate that. And, um, basically, that's it, uh, and the last clause F, uh, again, I just rearranged the language a little bit. Um, but it's the same thing that it said, which basically, there will be an official map and register, uh, and the review board clerk is going to, um, you know, keep that and that the public can see it whenever they want to. Again, you all have had most of this, you know, this language a couple, a week or two ago, and then I just tweaked it slightly last night.
Bill?
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering if you should just say the town clerk, because we don't have a review board clerk.
Uh, that's possible, I think we came up, I mean, and I'm happy with that, I think.
I remember it came up, I just noticed.
Yeah, I, and that's, it's fine, I think that the the thought was that the town clerk is the review board clerk, but I'm happy either way. Mark, Jean?
Um, let's, I think, let's just say the town clerk, people will know what it is, people who read it.
I I think that makes sense, is the town clerk is the records management officer for the town, too, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, I want to make sure we didn't say anything different up above. Okay.
So I wanted to just, um, you know, talk about for a minute the I totally get, um, the the desire for why Bill, why you added D, and I think it's a great idea. I am very concerned, though, because it does. Um, it does seem to violate the rule that, um, especially because New York State has a specific law that outlines how development rights can be transferred from one parcel to the other. So the state is not silent on that matter, and it's a very complicated. set of rules to transfer development rights. So, you know, you can keep it in. But if anyone ever challenged it, I'm not sure it would hold. I think it's a good, it's it's a good intent, but it is certainly, you know, I guess if you wanted to be, you know, you wanted to leave it in, you could say, you know, that pursuant to, and I'd have to look up the number of the law. And so that if someone wanted to do that and they agreed to do it, they would still have to follow the process outlined through state town law. That would be a little better, but I I am, I am concerned about this one because it's it's not so easy to do that.
Yeah, and I guess my comment would be that one would hope that when the original subdivision was done, that there was enough thinking about how the land was going to be developed that some sort of plan for which lots would be allocated, the additional lots would be would be kind of inherent in the design of the development and that, you know, allowing people in the future to, you know, just kind of change it willy nilly is like, yeah, okay, so maybe that helps to, you know, make it a little bit more palatable to, you know, people today. But, you know, in fact, I don't know that it would ever reasonably happen, or if it did happen, whether we would want it to happen. So if there's complications with, you know, the legal people, the state level, then just get rid of it.
And and I and I'm definitely okay with getting rid of it. My suggestion would be that we get rid of it pending further review and thinking, and I thought it was something that was simple. It's clearly not. But what I would say, Ernie, is that, you know, again, with the pattern development often occurs, like down the road from me, you know, a hundred or eighty acre farm got carved up into a forty acre piece and two or three twenty acre pieces. That's the development we tend to have. And it's not thinking, oh, and I know that eventually I wanna have fifteen houses here and we're gonna cluster, but this and, you know, that kind of forethought doesn't typically, I think, I mean.
I mean, you know, it's just, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So I, so I, I, yeah, so if, if it's since the committee, I'm totally happy to take out D. And, you know, but if there's someone who strongly wants to, again, the idea was, yeah, maybe there's gonna be some objection to people. But I was more thinking, yeah, you know, let's leave some flexibility in it, but I'm fine taking it out.
Um, anyone else wanna speak to this?
Not hearing any support for it. I'm gonna just, and then I can send you these.
Yeah.
I think we should take it out.
Okay.
I have to say, Bill, I love the idea because I think it's a really, I think it's maybe how, how people wanna behave. I just think it's really difficult. And I think it would be, it's when we make a final, or when we make our final report to the, to the board. And even right now, we could say to Tim, if it's as possible in the future, this might be a very good thing to add.
Okay, so with that, I will stop sharing at least momentarily cuz I think we have one more coming up soon, but let me, let me stop.
And I will certainly remember that, Jean.
It's regulated by state law.
Right.
Couldn't you just say possible?
Well, I would say yes, but the way the state law is written is in order to transfer development rights. The town has to specifically identify sending and receiving areas of who's gonna get the density versus who's gonna send it. So you, it's, it's really, the town outlines the procedure, but the procedure is on the town's responsibility to do.
Okay. So I
So that's I think it's a density bonuses, but the, 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 the readers, the, sorry, the figure, which again, in the full word version shows up somewhere in here, doesn't show up in this version.
Yeah, it, it, for some reason, it got put up somewhere else, but why don't you put up your
Share, share your figure.
Alright, I will do that now.
I don't recognize my face. I have to say that. You ever find that? You'd like look at your face sometimes and think, who the hell is that? Where did all that gray hair come from, for God's sake?
Yeah, that's another reason fishing license. I told him my hair looks brown.
No, that would be a lie.
Alright, so now Okay. Alright.
Aye.
So this is the revised figure again, pretty much what I, you know, revised the text that went with it and then added a few little doodads to hopefully clarify. So there was a one thing that, you know, a couple typos people pointed out already, and I think I have fixed those. So in terms of content, what has been, you know, now added to the figure is that a, a potential way of indicating the subdivision allocation is shown, doesn't have to be done exactly like this. But it could indeed be a number scrawled on a map at the clerk's office. And then I just point out in red, so it's hopefully obvious that this is not part of the actual like map, but that is what that means. I spelled out in more detail what, you know, things are. And I don't wanna read through all that. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance to read through it, but so I think those are the relevant changes from, you know.
For me, one word would help this. On your red, your little red highlight that says number of
Yeah.
Number of future subdivision.
That is excellent.
That, that was the only hard part for me to kind of comprehend was, okay, what do these numbers mean?
Yeah, I think that's, that's excellent.
Cool. I am, I am very impressed. And I also like the fact that you did not split up that, you know, it was sort of clear that you can split things up in a number of different ways. I like that.
Alright, so I'm going to move that this be the figure we use as a Reader's Aid Box to explain this.
The only thing I would add is because we wanna make sure that the read, that this is a Reader's Aid Box. So I think that in the, in the actual text, we need a caption or some other sort of, you know, label clearly making sure that it's a Reader's Aid Box.
Okay, can I leave that to you to do?
Yep.
Aren't they all gray anyway?
Yeah, yeah, they're all gray. And yeah, you'll have to deal with all that sort of stuff, which is partly why I changed the top color to yellow from gray where I originally had it. Cuz all this is gonna have gray around it, and so anyway.
Cool.
Without reading this over again, is it stated here too about rounding up?
Yes, it does. Right here, it says twenty divided by three equals seven, which was, this is result rounded to the nearest whole number.
Yeah.
So.
Cuz on the last one, it is. Doesn't say that, but.
Uh, when you say last one, oh, you mean the, like an earlier version I sent out?
No. The last.
Last box.
Last box. Yeah, we are. So we, we could point out there, I, I did, at that point, I thought, well, we've been, we've beaten this horse a bit. We didn't need to say it, but maybe we do. That, you know, the final density is two point nine, not three. We could say, which is three rounded the nearest whole number. Is that what you're suggesting, Bruce?
Yeah, cuz it's really not two point nine, cuz two point nine is rounded up to two point eight five seven, whatever.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Somebody's gonna look at that and do that, and then they're gonna You could just say due to rounding.
Right. Okay, so, so what words are, am I putting here or anything?
Despite say due to rounding.
Okay, but it's still, okay. Good enough?
Yep.
And, you know, you might even put that in parentheses cuz it's not really germane to your illustration.
Right.
So, you know, it's just kind of an interesting point.
Okay.
My period. There we go. Okay, alright, so I have moved it. I think Ernie seconded it.
But let's see, the average lot size is set twenty divided by seven equal. Okay, I'm just not, okay, fine, got it.
I, I mean, I debated having another sentence here saying, you know, this is fine because rounding the nearest whole number, this is three. But it just, it, you know, I didn't know if that need to be said or not, cuz I, you know, are we okay with this? Or do you wanna have something else that really points out, you know, yeah, this is less than three, but that's okay?
No, I think it's fine.
You could actually delete the whole last sentence and it's still
It, the, one could, and I debated doing that too. And if there's a motion for that, we can discuss that.
Let's leave it.
It's all good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Has it, has it been accepted?
Yes, all of those who want to, we have a motion on the floor. All of those in favor of substituting this for the original, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good. That has passed.
Alright, so I'm gonna save that version. And then I'm gonna stop sharing.
Great.
Wait, did, did we, did we accept the, the other motion? I don't remember doing that.
Yes.
Into the Reader's Aid Box?
Yes, yes. Okay, then we are on to, I think. Cuz that's, so the Reader's Aid Box is now there, and I don't think there's, when, render density bonuses. Which
You had a comment, Jean, on, on how that, there's a Reader's Aid Box that talks about how to do a density bonus, and you had a comment on that. Yeah, that one up there.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't think it's necessary. Okay, so I'm gonna resolve my, my thing and say, forget it. So then we have this, the public access or recreational use thing, which we basically decided that we wanted to think about some more, and we were actually going to put a note in this saying that these suggested bonuses, we'd love to hear from people about, are these the rational amounts, right?
Well, in, in the word version, and there is a note that I put in that says the percentage is to be further discussed after public input.
Yeah. That was a nice way of putting what I said, I think. Yeah. Okay, so.
I just wanna make a commentary. Um, I think that if you're, if you really wanna make these density bonuses work, that those, those numbers, even though I put them in, I think they're low. I don't think there are enough of an incentive for someone to bother to do this, so. You know, the incentive, when you do a density bonus, it has to be worthwhile for someone to wanna do it. So, you know, just think about whether this is, you know, enough of incentive to get the kind of amenity that you're seeking. So just, you know, as you go along and the public will talk about it, but that's just my two cents on it.
Great, thank you. That is really useful to know. So I want to then just have one vote that says we are now ready. Nan is gonna make these corrections. I will look it over. I would accept anybody else looking it over. We'll send it out to everyone. And once we get that back, it will be posted and we will mail out some information. So can I get a vote that says with these changes being made and acceptable, we are ready to post articles one through, the new articles, one through four is the second version. Any discussion? All in favor of that, say aye. So with that, aye, aye, aye. Any ayes? Okay.
Great.
That passes. Great. So
Can you be sure and send me the link to that Google Doc?
I will, I will do that.
Bill, you'll send me the new files.
Yep, yep, I'll do that momentarily.
And link to Google Doc. Okay, I will do that. So, um, so we have thought about now, about public meetings, and I think that what we have basically decided is we love that memo that Nan's friend sent through Nan, which I thought was a great idea. We start four weeks out, we start, we send things a couple of times to people. He suggested postcards, which I think is a great idea. My suggestion is that the first postcard essentially says we are ready, we have finished essentially half of the document in terms of length anyway. And, and we, we have a second version ready. We are scheduling public meetings on these two dates. And it is, the, the document is on the website by the time it gets mailed out. And also, print versions will be available to borrow from the town clerk. Is that what she's been doing, I think, is, you know, people sign out. She has like ten copies and people sign one out and pay it back.
Of the four articles.
Um, of the, of the, like, yeah, the whole, of the, goes for articles, yeah. So, um, with that.
Uh, I, we didn't talk about the map. I forgot about that.
Forgot about the map too. Okay, so Nan can, I, I'm, there are copies of the map of the zoning map. I looked at it. I thought it was fine, but I don't know if everyone else has had a chance to look at it.
Uh, yeah, hold on, let me get it up.
I guess the suggestion or question I have is whether it would be useful to have, you know, basically maps of the hamlet areas in some way or other, so that people can see that better or not. I mean, you know, I don't want it there. I mean, there's a lot of density there in terms of population, so maybe that makes sense. On the other hand, you know, the whole town is important, but, you know, I don't know. So that's an open question. Well, or just, so that's the question, I guess.
I think, and then I had a question actually about whether you wanted, right now, the water overlay is all, it's all together on one map. It could be separated, so you have the base zoning districts on one map and the overlay on a separate map. That makes, you know, an extra page, but it's up to you.
So essentially, this is the water overlay map in a way.
It's everything.
It's everything. It's, yeah. It's everything.
As long as the resolution is enough that somebody can identify their own property and see what zone it's in and where it lays in relationship to the blue stuff. I think that that should be fine.
And I don't know if that will be the case. That's the question is, is, you know, when we take the figure and insert it into the Word doc, is it of that resolution or not? Or particularly, when a PDF of that is made and posted on the town website, is the resolution of that PDF act good enough to do that? And I don't know the answer.
Well, that, this is the PDF that you're looking at right now, and this is at seventy-five percent. So the word version, you could, someone could, um, cuz it's a picture of this PDF. So someone could take that word version and, and scale it up, and it should be the same. But this is, this is the same PDF that you would post separately. You know, so you would have, even though the map is in the text, I suggest that you also post the map as a separately. Um, but so this is what, if someone wanted to scale this up to a hundred percent, this is the resolution that they would see it as. Or, or they could make it even bigger.
As long as the property lines are on it, like, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think the other, I mean, the how, I think the, the buildings are on there. You can see them. The printed version of the map that the town hall has has to be on a large enough sheet of paper to give that sense as well, because not everyone is gonna zoom in, you know, on this online. So it has to be a C size or D size sheet or whatever, so that we can see property boundaries and buildings.
Could we, Mark, could we put a larger version of the map, say, on an easel in the library and just leave it there, for example?
So Bruce, um, has, has a question and has a comment. He has a map.
I don't, probably doesn't make any sense, but I'm almost, wouldn't make any sense to have the red pariet buff around there and then the next line too, cuz then people could see
Cause then people could see that the overlay is not as big as what it was gonna be. I mean, it's visual.
I'm not following what you're asking, Bruce.
I'm asking, should we have the red, red, red parian buffer marked on there? And then I don't even know what the name is for the next state line, and then the overlay? So the people can see that the overlay is not dramatically huge compared to what it was gonna be?
Well, the overlay include, what you see in the blue hatch includes those setbacks.
Right.
Um.
What, what Bruce is suggesting is some way to indicate to the public that the water resources overlay was, was modified, was originally put out to show that it is really, you know, been shrunk down to the most critical areas. I, I'm in, I think that we, if we do that, we could, like, maybe present that information at the public information session. I think adding those lines in here would probably get this map too complicated. So I would suggest not adding it to this, but I understand Bruce's sentiment and, and I get it.
If you compare the two maps, you will see that, right, right, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can, we can, I'm speaking for Rick, but I'm pretty sure we could make a comparison map, but if this is the, the zoning map, this is an official part of the zoning law. I would not do that in this, on this map, but certainly to have another one, if you wanted to show people the change. Um, I could ask Rick to show, to make a map showing, you know, the, the change from, you know, put one in one color and one in another color, so you could see the difference.
Um, I, I think you're right, this is the official map, and so it, it's what should be with the document. But I think it makes a lot of sense for a public meeting that we would have that, and also, um, Nan, your friend suggested that we put on the postcard some important pieces of information about things that have changed. And maybe, maybe that is an important piece of information. You know, the, uh, how the water, how the, how the water overlay has changed.
Right, and I think that if you wanna, if you wanna do the suggestion that we had about, um, regular email blasts, people, and regular, um, you know, notices of what, what's been changed, I think Barb and Bill, in your development of the frequently asked questions, probably have a good idea of specific things that you might, we might want to point out as things that have changed. I mean, I can give, I can highlight what those are, but I think that you ought to, as part of your preparation for this meeting, decide, um, you know, what are the highlights of the changes that we've made that you specifically want to convey to the public?
Right.
And, and, and I would agree that, you know, that is a task of the zoning commission, we, we need to grab the bull by the horns, so to speak, and, and take charge of this. This is, this is our meeting. And so, you know, now we'll be there to help explain things, but we should determine what are the salient points, the most relevant points of the community. Uh, and with that, I'm gonna sign off, cause I have other stuff, uh, to move on to, so, uh, have a nice meeting, you guys.
Thanks, Bill. I'll be in touch.
Thanks a lot.
Um, and, and I'll just say that, um, that any, any writing or any narrative that refers to changes in the map um, should point out that the, uh, compared to the original map, uh, from December of twenty-one, that the forest resource, forest overlay, and I think there was an agricultural overlay, um, that those have been removed.
Yeah. Um, yeah, let's, let's spend some minutes thinking about points that we would want to make in our communications. Um, that's about the map, anything else about the map? I did, Bill had suggested that we might also have maps of the hamlets available at the town meeting. And I think, at the, at the public meeting, and I think that does make sense.
I think, I, I would say that if this is printed on a twenty-four by thirty-six, you're gonna be able to see everything.
Okay.
Um, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, whatever we had at the original public hearing was more than sufficient.
Yeah, I can, I can find my property on it, then, see it.
No, I think, you know, if you have a little lake or somewhere, and you can't tell if you're in the blue or in the brown.
Right.
But.
So are there other issues that I, that we think have made significant changes?
For the, for the map, uh, the, the hamlets are different, you know, Carolina, our Sladerville and West Sladerville, uh, were broken apart. Um, the, um, uh, Beesmer Hamlet was expanded to include, um, area, kind of to the east of, what, east of Landon Road or east of Beesmer Road, something like that. I'm, anyway, the, the hamlets were changed.
Right. Um. That's true, okay.
Um, I mean, generally, the other, here, I can stop sharing this, just so you can look at something else. Um. Uh, you, you made significant changes to the use table. Um, but how would you characterize, if we were gonna send a message out to the community, other than just saying significant changes have been made to the use table? How would you characterize those changes?
I think one point is about, um, uh, uh, home businesses. I think that, that, that home businesses are allowed, um, e- everywhere, and, um, and, you know, I want to make a point that people really could operate a home business of many different kinds.
I, I don't know, I, my general feeling is, is that, you know, this is a postcard. You just kind of make some, some basic points about the big changes, but, you know, we, we're not walking back what we proposed before, you know, we're not making excuses for our behavior before. We're just saying, you know, here's some highlights, and leave it at that, and let people, you know, figure out where, where it is. I don't, I don't think it needs to, again, promote zoning, um, it needs to just lay out where, where people are gonna see some, some, some significant changes, and then we're just, you know, free things, or be more than sufficient. We're looking for input at the, at the meeting, right, we're looking for people to come and participate.
That's true.
Try to defend the position.
Um.
So if they don't read it, don't come.
Michelle?
I, I just gonna say, isn't, isn't that gonna be the presentation at the public meeting, really, is the description of what's changed? So, what, will there be a presentation of some sort? And I'm assuming it's gonna be partly about what's changed, no?
I would hope that we would, we would do more just presenting where we're at now, and, and just say, you know, leave the what was there as, as, you know, a very preliminary thing, and bears little resemblance to what we're proposing now.
Well, anyway, I, I agree with Ernie that the postcard should just not have, shouldn't have a lot of stuff on it, and I, I, I guess to me, one of the most significant changes is that we've gotten rid of, um, we've eliminated, uh, a couple of overlays, because I think that might have been upsetting to people, so, but I would not put a lot on the postcard.
Okay, I, I think it wasn't the, the, I mean, I think the postcard was to advertise the meetings, but what was suggested was, um, some regular communication with the community in the time between when the version is posted and whenever we have these sessions to get out the message of what the facts are in terms of what has been changed. So little snippets of information in a series of posts, um, on the website or email blast through your email list, that was the original idea. You don't want to do that, that's fine, but the, I think what we were talking about in terms of other communications was finding a way so that, there's a lot of people who won't come, especially that's getting awfully close to graduation weekend um, before and after. So there's gonna be a lot of people who won't come to these meetings for a variety of reasons, and we shouldn't um, exclude them from having information about what's been changed. Um, you know, they can always watch a recording of it, but the original idea was to, um, kind of be proactive in terms of letting the community know you, you've spent an incredible amount of time listening to them and hearing about the concerns and weighing a lot of different options, and here's the changes that you've made in response. So that was the original idea. You can take it or leave it, but that was, um, you know, where our suggestions were.
I, I think, I think it makes sense, cause, you know, the reality is a lot of people haven't read it, and no matter if it's up there for a month, a lot of people still won't read it. I'd like people to have an opportunity to know what's in it. So, um, yeah, so if we send out a postcard at the beginning, we end up, we tell them that the meetings are gonna be on these days. We tell them a couple of points, and we say, if you want to get an email blast, make sure you go to this site and get on the list. We'll be sending out some other information, and, um, and also sort of describe a little about what the meeting will be like. So I'm thinking about an hour and a half to two-hour meeting with a, maybe a half-hour presentation at the beginning, and then questions and answers all limited to three minutes. Questions and answers limited to three minutes, so that we can get through a fair number of questions and answers. Does that make sense to people? Would you rather do it in a different way?
I can't suggest a better torture than.
Yeah, so, Jean, would that be, people have their couple of minutes to ask a question or make a comment, and then we respond to each of those, or is it just a listening session?
I think we should try to respond. Um, what do you think? What do people think?
I, I think we should try to respond to questions, I, I think that.
Yeah, cause the public, at the end of this, there will be a public hearing, which is a listening session. In a public hearing, you don't respond.
No, I think, I think we need to try to, to address questions as they come up, and so I think we just encourage people, keep it short and sweet. This isn't the listening session, this is a question and answer session.
Right. And we'll try to keep our answers short and sweet too. Um, this will be right after, uh, the week of, of high school graduate, I don't understand this, they're having graduation before they finish the regents. I don't even understand how you do that, but they are. I know, I was like, oh, great, I guess they're gonna decide on some other method. But, uh, so if we do the twenty-eighth, or the, uh, the, the Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, or, or Thursday, the thirtieth, I'm thinking that we could start with the Zoom on the Tuesday or the Wednesday, and it, um, an in-person thing on the Thursday. Does that make sense to people?
Where will it be? Where will the in-person one be?
I think our biggest place is the, is the, um, is the Brooktondale Fire Hall.
Should we try to have the public on a, on a weekend?
Well, we could, the, the, uh, the weekend I had looked at was June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and that isn't high school graduation, a number of people can't make it. Um. Right, you were one that couldn't, Bruce, and, um.
And I can't make it either.
And nor could Nan, and I think we need Nan there. So, um, and other than that, it's moving this into July, which we could do, but then we have July fourth. So that's that weekend, um, the next, the following weekend is, July fourth is on the Monday.
Monday.
Well, I can, I can just see that the public would complain about that having a weekend, maybe, that's the only thing I was thinking.
Yeah, I think, I think you're possibly right, but I don't know what else to do. I don't want this to go on forever, so.
I'm, I'm assuming they'll complain, but
Well.
That's the way it goes.
And what time would it be on? Um, the in-person one?
I'm thinking that we would try to do seven to nine. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Seven to nine. For you, Nan, since you're the one who would have to come, is the, is the Thursday better? Is the Wednesday better?
Doesn't matter, at this point.
Okay, I'm gonna say Thursday, the thirtieth. And, um, and begin to write some stuff about that and send it out to everyone and ask for your, you know, your suggestions in a timely manner, and, um, so we can get something printed. Um, and we'll get in touch with the Brooktondale Fire Hall and see if it's available, cause that's, we'd want to have it there, and, um, I think that's what we can do, okay?
So I, I have some detailed questions, though, on, on the presentation, is that something that is gonna be informal and you're just gonna chat about it? You want a formal presentation of some sort? Who's gonna do it? Um, you know, how are we gonna review that, if it's something more, more formal than just, you know, chatting, I, I, you need to talk, I guess the message is you need to talk about the presentation, what you want it to be.
Um, I, I think there needs to be a presentation rather than, because I don't think everyone will have read it by the time they get there. And so I think there needs to be some, this is what this, here's the purposes. That's, you know, pretty clear. Here's the, um, here's the districts, and, and, and using the map as a guide of what the districts are. Talking about the overlay and what the overlay does and doesn't do. Um. And, um, then I think it's the uses and dimensions, which are kind of the critical.
Yeah, I think, I think there has to be an initial, just, okay, this is what zoning is. There's a map, there's a set of tables, you know, and, and that's what we're gonna, you know, discuss tonight, these are the basic parts.
Right.
There are other parts that are still coming, but these are the gist of what it is, and then from there, just a quick run-through of what the, the big points are, and then go from there with, you know, just the, the question and answer and talking, um, I think, you know, this kind of zoning one-on-one, again, not, not trying to, um, you know, rationalize why it's good or anything else, just to say, this is what it is. This is how it's going to be, you know, this is how we're presenting it, and just go through it.
So we're gonna meet again on June seventh and on June twenty-first, and so Nan, maybe what we should do on the twenty-first is do the run-through of what you would be doing in not, eight and nine days after that. Um, would that make sense? Great. Um, and then I'm thinking that we will, um, we will work on getting, um, postcards out by the end of this month, and, um, that we will get stuff up on the website by the end of this month, as soon as, you know, they'll be up the day before the postcards go out. And, um, when we come back together on June seventh, we can start it on discussing the old Article Four Development Standards. Um, because what could be more fun?
What could be more fun?
I don't know. Um, and we'll just, you know, go through the rest of this document. Um, I wanted to say that Site Plan Review, the Site Plan Review Committee or Board, or whatever it is, is meeting on the thirty-first. I think that's right, Bruce.
Of May.
Of May, and they have, we've sent them all sorts of stuff, this is, you know, this is, here's the original law, here's what is in this, and that was sort of taken from the, um, the task force, and tell us what you think, so that we, when we get to discussing that, we'll have a sense of what they think, and, um. they seem, I would say, that covers Site Plan Review and and special use permits, right?
No, not this, I, no, I don't think they were doing special use permits.
Okay.
Just like, just like plan review.
A site plan review. Okay. And and we have to before that discuss development standards and supplementary standards. And and then a lot of the rest of this, the enforcement and administration, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Review Board, et cetera, is kind of, it's kind of administrative and it's sort of probably bump, right?
Right.
It's already been written, bump.
So, I mean, I was just getting, I was a little bit out of the picture when we were talking with, with the subdivision, I mean, the Site Plan Review people. Are we gonna meet with them?
No, they were just gonna meet and, and talk themselves. We don't have to be there. Except Bruce, who has too many hats. So. It's kind of sad, really. So. Okay. I suggest that let's, I would really like for you, I'll send out something saying, this is what I'm thinking. If you have things that you suggest that we might wanna be sure to say to people, please let me know what those are. And and we'll, and I'll start writing, you know, some documents that we can go out into mail. You are also, I think, Mark's probably gonna put something in a in a newsletter, right? So that the newsletter, one of the town newsletters will also go out. Good. So.
Jane, one, one comment. Let's just be sure that the dates of the meetings get posted appropriately on the website and, and sent out, because this June seventh and fourteenth is kind of off-cycle of what we had been doing. We had been doing, I think, the second and fourth.
Right, you're right. Month one day. So that would be the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Right, which is the same as the meeting, which is the reason why I thought you changed it to seventh and fourteenth. Or, or seventh and twenty-first, rather.
No, I was just not thinking.
Okay. You don't need to change it for me. I, I have a, another, I have a conflict on the fourteenth, but you don't need, need to be at the meeting, take notes. I, I can be there on the twenty eighth. No, wait. So wait. Wait, so we're gonna do what, what nights? I'm confused.
Well, our normal days would be June fourteenth and twenty-eighth. But I just wrote on my piece of paper, June seventh and twenty-first, thinking that the seventh was the second Tuesday, but that's not right. It's the fourteenth. So.
But do you really wanna meet three nights in a row that last week of June?
No, I don't. I would rather meet on the twenty-first for sure. Do people wanna meet on the fourteenth and the twenty-first? How, how is the seventh for people?
One meeting looks good for me. Doesn't matter.
Seventh, raise your hands.
Just, what do we need to accomplish before?
Before the meeting?
Yeah.
We don't. I'm just.
Okay, so we're just trying to.
We're just trying to move ahead on the document. Right. Um. So it really, it's a question of the seventh or the fourteenth, and then I think you're right. We should meet on the twenty-first so that we're prepared for the meetings, for the public meetings. So let's meet on the twenty-first and tell me if you like the seventh better, raise your hand. If you like the fourteenth, better raise your hand. Seventh. I have one up. Fourteenth. Most people don't like anything.
Only two people voted, one to one.
Okay, let's go home and send this out in the mail and make you respond to me by tomorrow.
Well, the record, I don't care, either one.
Um. Let's make it the fourteenth and the twenty-first. The fourteenth is the regular date. The twenty-first is off-schedule. But that's fine. So let's make it the fourteenth and the twenty-first. That will give us time to think about this and also to go back and read the development standards and the supplementary standards, because it's been a damn long time since we've read those, right?
But yeah, didn't we memorize them now? Or, no?
No.
I don't, I don't know what Google Doc we're working with now, but we should probably kind of refresh at some point. So we can go back to those, you know, our original comments and
Yes.
All of that's still there.
I will, I will go back and look. I think, I think it's the same one, but it's, what we've just been doing is a different document. But I will go back and make sure that we have that and I, and I link it to all of you. Okay, so Google Docs to everyone. Okay, I will do that. Um, great. Um, I wanna say that I am very happy we have gotten to this stage. Thank you, Nan. Thank you, everyone on the commission. I think this is a great step forward. I, I can see the, I can almost see. Let's see. No, I'm not gonna say it. But I do wanna say, on a very serious matter, we've had another, another school shooting in this country, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence about that. Thank you, everyone. Let's let's try to live in peace. Good night. My nephew teaches about thirty miles away from this latest.